A struggle with the small departments and keeping that, keep running hard on that kind of stuff. But in general, our department gets part of it done. But I think that's our biggest issue we should invite.
Right. Do you guys have a supply center there for materials? Or does they have to go to outside to get that?
No, we've got, we've got a hardware store. We've got two hardware stores in town.
Okay. Okay. So what we've done, what I've done in my other jurisdiction is set up on Saturdays in different locations throughout the city. We set up information so we can get together with the public and answer those questions and help them to get that knowledge that we're speaking of as an outreach.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Rogers?
I think that's it. Yeah. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
So can, will we be interviewing the other applicants? And I think you can stay on now that you've had your questions. And then we'll go to, after everybody's done, the second agenda item will be where they actually decide if they would like to alter the decision to.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I have someone on the line about sure who it is. So let me see.
Okay.
It's not even me now or anything identified here. Hi, Galaxy S10. Are you here to interview? Certainly not. Okay. The next one we have on the line is Gary Rogers. Try to get him unmuted here. Gary?
Can you hear us there, Mr. Rogers?
I can, I can hear a place that sounds like a thousand miles away.
That's okay. We can hear you okay.
Well, I'm glad somebody can.
Okay.
Good. I can hear you just fine.
Good.
So. Oh, let's talk.
All right.
Be thoughtful.
So I don't know if you caught the HR director's explanation, but you've got all these questions here that I'm going to read and have you answer.
Everybody does that. Not interrupt you, but everybody does that. They all have a list of questions. They have a script that they go through and then they, they take notes on whatever I say. And then I end up with a Dear John Leonard or a Dear John thing. So I've been through this probably close to 100 times over the last 10 years.
Okay.
So what you're saying is nothing new, but go ahead.
Good. And the council will jump in with any follow-up questions as I see fit. So we'll start here with question one.
But I'm glad, right, I'm glad the city council is there because I, I think they have more power than they realize.
Okay. So we have question one here. It's what attracted you to Ely and have you been here before?
I have never been to Ely. I love Nevada. I want to stay in Nevada. And when the job opening was posted on the ICC Job Connect website, I decided to apply. And so I did. I mean, I want to learn about Ely because if I get hired, of course, I want to know everything. I no longer hunt and no longer fish because of my father-in-law died, my dad died, and my father-in-law, his father-in-law died, that's my wife's grandfather. So I have nobody to go hunt, fish with, none of my kids are interested. So the best I do now is just hide and walk because I'm supposed to, like I told my doctor that. So I love exploring and here, and I love trains. There's got to be a train around or somewhere. I just love trains.
Well, good.
Anyway.
All right. Thank you. Question two is.
Sure.
What do you know about the city of Ely as a governmental agency?
Not very much, other than what was posted on the website and what I learned from the ICC Job Connect. I will tell you this, that the city council, as I said, has more power than they maybe realize. And this is typical with any board supervisor, a county jurisdiction or a city jurisdiction with a city council. They make lots of decisions that affect the residents. What building codes do you want to use? What building codes don't you want to use? You know, what do you allow or don't allow in city ordinances? Do you accept the county ordinances or not? Because you're, you're own jurisdiction. So typically, this is where I run into the very serious incidents I either worked under, worked with, or worked for over the years.
Okay. Thank you. Question three is give a description of your past work history, experiences, and how it would apply to the building official inspector position that you've applied for.
Well, my construction experience goes back many, many years. I started as a construction laborer and got into the operating engineers apprentice program for equipment operator slash surveyor, went from that into journeyman training for general building inspector, which also included a special inspector. So I have the construction experience of operating all kinds of heavy equipment, including doing surveying, grade checking, and then eventually went into building inspection, where I did basically everything, anything, something as fast as I could get certified. I would be, you know, performing those job duties. And that's all the special inspection categories and then all the building inspection categories, all the way up to green and energy and those kind of things, accommodation inspection. So I worked as a temporary employee for Clark County Building Department. This is back in 2008. And worked for the Nevada State Public Works Board as a temporary employee. That was back in 2009. So I have the experience not only working in my own business, which I set up with my sons years ago, and have worked in all various aspects of public works, including having worked at the Nevada test site where I was a senior project inspector there. And well, more or less with my own business, I contract myself out to anybody. I always felt myself as a mercenary because, you know, work for anybody that pays me. And I found that that gave me a lot more flexibility and freedom as far as the work I did. But it also gave me a lot more experience that, that which I bring now to the table. I have no experience as a building official. And I've, I've told other interviewers the same thing. You know, if you come in, somebody comes in from Broken Arrow, Oklahoma, and they did a building official for 15 years, they want to, you know, be your building official, I can't fault them because I just have no experience in the capacity of a building official. But I am certified for it. I certainly can do it. As far as building inspector, I've done all the different inspections that a building inspector would be called on to do.
Well, that takes us into the next question on what licenses or certifications do you currently have?
Basically, everything. I have all the special inspection categories. I have all the building combination inspector categories, including energy, green, like I mentioned. I also am a certified quality inspector. And I have other certifications such as IATMO for plumbing. I have certifications in electrical for the International Association of Electrical Inspectors. So I come with a full range of abilities, skills, all of which I have performed out in, in the workforce. So there are new things coming up. I just noticed it today. I got an email from ICC that they have added a new category to the special inspector group, plus the fact that the edu code conference in March is going to be all virtue because of this virus thing that's going on. So I never stopped learning. I never stopped, you know, looking for certifications. Right now, I'm working on fire sprinkler inspector and fire sprinkler plan examiner. I've done a lot of third-party plan examinations before it gets to the jurisdiction. People will come to me and I'll help them out. And I don't charge much, but it, it helps the client get ready to go to the city or county or wherever and then have their plans checked. Because by the time I look at them, it's another set of eyes before the plan checker and the jurisdiction looks at them.
Sure. Are all your licenses current or able to get current?
Yeah, they are. They're all current. I renewed them December of last year.
Sure. So question six is, are you familiar with the international codes?
Yes. Yeah, all of them.
Question seven is, can you explain what the international codes are?
Keep, my, my first, you know, when I get a question like that, my first reply is keeping people safe. When I trained under Ron Lynn, who was a building official in Clark County years ago, he taught a class in which he mentioned the codes of Hammurabi. Of course, I'd never heard of it. He brought it up and said, well, that, that's the first time there was ever a building code. And what the codes of Hammurabi said, that if a builder builds a house and it falls down on the family, then you put the builder to death. So safety is the biggest issue that I have with anything that I do as far as inspection and/or plan reviews. And then from then on, it's just a matter of, is it actually built correctly? Does it follow the code? And in your case, there may be city ordinances that you want imposed. And you may want certain codes, or the city council again, certain codes impose, others not. So that's why I say the city council has a lot of decisions to make. But what I do is follow basically what I'm given to follow. In other words, to coin a phrase from Las Vegas gambling, you deal the cards and I play.
Sure. Question eight is, how would you handle individuals that are not following the international codes?
Training. First thing comes to mind, training. I would assume that if they're not following, they may not know or know how. And one of my little side businesses is Rogers Inspection Training. And before that, when I worked for Arrow and Deering, I brought in apprentices, inspector apprentices, to teach them how to inspect and how to follow the various codes, how to read the plans, how to follow them. So if someone is not following the code for whatever reason, I'm going to bring that in, like that person in, find out what's going on with them. You know, quoting Jerry Springer, you know, what's going on? And then, you know, go from there. Or likely enough, probably has something to do with training and lack of knowledge. And since I'm used to training people anyway with my, my side business, inquiring my rigor system. Then I'm going to bring them up to speed and, and try to get them to understand how important the codes are.
Question nine is, can you explain the term authority having jurisdiction and how it is applied?
The authority having jurisdiction is your building official. And so the city council, I'm going to assume, would do the hiring of the building official. So the building official then is given the authority or the jurisdiction over any kind of building, no matter what it is. But he is the final answer to quote an old Regis Philbin game, Regis Philbin game show, where the final answer really is the building official. And it's important that that person knows and be able to handle any situation that can come up. But that's what authority, you know, that's what the authority has to use. It's his authority granted by those who hired him, which in your case is your city council.
How much experience do you have in performing plan reviews?
I started, let's see, mid 1990s, when I started getting certifications for plan reviews. I would not do these plan reviews that was not certified for. That's always a personal philosophy. So I have a lot of them, except I do not have electrical, I do not have plumbing, and I do not have mechanical. I don't have the, the background to be able to, to, had you never done the work as far as reviewing plans in those areas. Other areas like building structural, sure. Uh-uh. I've done that, not the mid 1990s, I guess is what I started because I was doing plan review certifications the same time I was adding inspector certs.
Okay.
It's been quite a while.
The position requires long distance traveling within White Pine County. Approximately 30% of the time is spent traveling. Does this pose any issue for you?
No, not at all. Wherever your city boundary is, that's where I go.
Well, the, the position, we contract with the county to also provide them building inspection services, which is.
Well, then I can go with wherever the county will want me to go.
Yep. Question 12 is what areas, if any, do you feel you may be lacking as a building official inspector?
Well, inspector, not really lacking anything but building official, like I said earlier, I have no experience doing as far as administering a jurisdiction or, you know, a group of employees. I have experience with my own business with employees, but not quite the same thing as a building official that handles not only the public, but the various staff members. I usually had family members in my business. That's why if you look at the application or resume, whatever, GM Rogers' sons, first off, had all three of my sons. And then because two of my sons were married, their wives worked, and also my wife worked in the staff area. So I had family members doing everything. So I didn't necessarily have any outside people performing any staff functions, secretarial, clerk, you know, delivery, papers or plans, whatever. So it was all family. And I don't see a problem with doing that, but I have no experience with that kind of a jurisdiction situation, such as, you know, your, your situation.
Sure. The position requires you to be a resident of White Pine County. Will this be an issue for you?
No.
No. What would you describe as your goals five years from now or your five-year outlook, your plan?
Well, five years ago, my goal was to become a building official for somebody who needs me and who can use me. So five years from now, I'm not going anywhere. I'm not going to come in from, for example, came in Arizona, worked for you for a couple of years and say, okay, now I got something under my belt. I'm going to go off to Ohio and work there or Iowa and work there. I come there, I stay there. Five years from now, you hire me, I'm still there. I, why would I leave? I have built my lifelong dream of being a building official somewhere for somebody. No, I'm not going to leave. You're not expecting something to be. I've told this to other jurisdictions that I don't know if they just like water into the bridge or goes over their head or whatever. But, you know, I'm, I'm quite serious. Again, you know, I have to be honest with you. I'm not a young boy. You know, I, I told other jurisdictions, you want to hire a young boy, fine. You're not going to offend me or bother me, but I am what I am. So, you know, there I am.
Sure. Any follow-up questions on any of that from the council?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Gary, you, you said you had all your licenses attached to your resume. Every one of them expired in November 30th of 2020. You, you'd say you renewed all of those, right?
Yeah, and I could send you the, the card that they send you. They now have a picture ID card that goes with all certifications. And I can, I can email that to anybody, you Ed or anybody. Once it's sent, it was not updated. I mean, I bought it in December when I did all the renewals. I did all renewals once because Mary Barnett was my voting person and ICC recommended that. It was easy enough to do. But you would need a further copy. And this card has my picture on it.
Right.
So it's not like, you know, you can't see Gary, I can get to see me because I have a, it's a photo ID ICC card.
I see that. I see that this was actually sent to you on March 25th of 20, which is one year ago. Anyway, I just wanted to verify that. If you did say that you had all renewed, so the application didn't show that.
Yeah.
Like that. So thank you.
Any other questions?
No, you're welcome. I, I'm, I'm wrong to re, to supply that for you or anybody.
Uh-huh.
I have a good.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Is there any other questions?
I think Janet had wanted us to verify when he would be available to start.
Oh, that is correct. Your application does say that you're available kind of whenever. Is there a date, earliest date you'd be available if you were hired that you could start?
My wife had her eye surgery Monday of this week. She had a partially torn, partially detached retina in her left eye for a week, which is going on right now. She, out of every hour, 50 minutes, she has to lay on her stomach with her head in the special pillow. She is, according to the surgeon, out at least four to six weeks. Then she'll have to get glasses. She's a Clark County employee. She's under FMLA, family of the medical. I can't really tell you exactly when I'd be available if you want to hire me. I'm thinking the end of February possibly, but I, I just, I can't get anything down at this point.
Okay. Any other questions from the council or the HR director?
You can ask.
Do you have any questions for us, Mr. Rogers?
Well, the only thing is I would like to know more about not only the city of Ely, but White Pine County because I've never been in the county either. Just have not gotten up in that part of the country. But I would love to go up there, love to work there, love to explore because I love to explore. Again, I, I hike because, hey, I'm, you know, I'm older and I, I don't have anybody to hunt fish with anyway now. So, but I, you know, love to know more about, you know, somebody sending me more information would be great. Love it. Even if I don't get hired, love to go visit anyone.
We'd be happy to have you.
Great. Thank you.
All right then. So I think our HR director has one thing.
Well, I was just going to say, if you want to stay on the line, you're welcome to now. Seems you've gone through the questions. And of course, we've got a couple more. And then the second agenda item is where the council will make their decision.
Sure. I can stay on.
Okay. You're welcome to hang up.
Thank you. Love to.
Jennifer, do we have anybody else?
Mr. Penkowsky, are you on the line?
Is there Joseph Penkowsky on the line?
Jim Green is on the line.
Okay.
Do you need me to get off?
No, if you'll just mute yourself though.
Okay. Let's see. That's, what, do I do star six again?
Star six, yep. That'll do it.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to do it right now.
Mr. Green?
Jim Green, are you on the, on Zoom conference? You could unmute yourself. If you're on a phone that's star six, if you're on the computer, it's a button somewhere else.
All right. Thanks, man.
Okay. Anyone you would? No.
Okay, there we are, I think. Jim's here, speaking.
Oh, hi, Jim. Mayor Robertson here. I don't know if you were able to be on for the HR director's initial instructions there, but we do have a list of questions here that I'm going to read and have you respond to. The council is going to jump in as I see fit with any follow-up questions.
Okay.
We'll get cracking here. Question one is what attracted you to Ely and have you ever been up here before?
Yes, I've been to Ely a couple of times. I'm an outdoors guy. I went across the state of Nevada here and went to Ely and I was impressed with the small-town atmosphere.
Great. Question two is what do you know about the city of Ely as a governmental agency?
Well, I've read about it on the internet as best I could and, you know, the city council and the form of government and so forth. And looked at Wikipedia and all that, so I tried to learn something about it. And there were no surprises, I think. Pretty familiar with city government, so I was a city councilman myself in a jurisdiction.
Okay. Question three is give a description of your past work history, experiences, and how it would apply to the building official inspector position you have applied for.
Okay, well, my background was construction. I'm a second-generation contractor. I've contracted for 25 years prior to going into dedicating my career to building inspection. And also went in the Navy CBs, which was a builder, a, a officer, CBs. And then I went into building inspection basically with the city of Reno, Nevada. And during that time, I climbed the ladder and was also the president of the Northern Nevada chapter of ICC for three years in Reno. I had a lot of experience there from your combination inspection to all the way to, to the supervisor of plan review for the city of Reno. And that includes all the buildings, residential, commercial, industrial. And I've also worked in four other jurisdictions as a building official, the last one being Jackson, Wyoming. And I would probably be there, but my wife got terminally ill and I had to return to California. So that's where I'm at today. I applied because I'd like to go back in the workforce and I prefer a small community. I like to do plan review myself and inspections and also a building official position. I'm multitasked in all of those fields. So I'm fully certified. Might have a copy of my certs in front of you. They're current and there's, there are legacy certifications, which means they are residential and commercial both.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, you answered a few of these in your last answer, but we'll just keep going down the list here. It says what licenses or certifications do you currently have? And we do have that, that list here. If you could just kind of summarize that for the board.
Yes, well, the top of the list, of course, is all the way through to building official. And I've had that since 1998. And all my certifications go through all of the trades, the combination program for all of the trades. And also a plan review certification because I do plan review as a building official. That's what I'm used to doing. Plan examiner, building official, all in one. And I like the smaller community where I can do those different functions. That's what I did for the town of Jackson, Wyoming also, was the, the plan review. I did all of the plan review. And also Plumas County, where I actually live today, we're close to Reno. But licenses, I still have a contractor license since 1972. And I think that's about it right now.
Okay. And all these, all these licenses are, are current or are able to get current?
Yes, they're all current for right now. They were renewed up, oh, six months, a year ago. I believe the expiration is not for a couple more years.
Are you familiar with the international code?
Well, that's what I enforced to city of Reno for eight years as an inspector and then as a plan reviewer supervisor. And also in the town of Jackson, Wyoming is on the I code. I, I was the past president of the Northern Nevada chapter of ICC. That's what I did. I was in a transformation from ICBO to ICC. And I participated in that throughout the United States. The city of Reno sent me all over the United States at the conferences for that transition. So I'm very familiar with the I codes, yes.
Okay. Can you explain what the international codes are?
Well, they're, they're a accumulation of three code bodies that in the United States came together to, to make one code across the United States and actually overseas. And that was developed to be international, to be able to use international. The federal government insisted that they want, that they want one code instead of three code bodies that were in the United States. And so in late 1998, I believe it was, somewhere in there, we actually did the transition to the international codes. And they're a building code, obviously, but they're also all the other codes that are involved for all the trades. You know, we have the plumbing, the electric and mechanical codes, the building code, of course, residential and commercial.
Question nine, well, let's see, we're on eight. How would you handle individuals that are not following the international building code?
Well, they have to be informed. I'm great about trying to be the teacher because that's part of our job as a building department. I, well, I believe in just a, you know, a joint, excuse me, a joint effort from the government to the private industry, the citizens to have a combination team approach to building safety. That is the code. I I believe in just a, you know, a joint, excuse me, a joint effort from the government to the private industry or the citizens to have a combination team approach to building safety. That is the code. And so they would have to be informed. If they come in, I give them the answers in the in the office typically. And sometimes print out the part of the code and show them exactly what we're talking about. And go through the process of information.
Okay. Can you explain the term authority having jurisdiction and how it's applied?
Well, that's your local jurisdiction. That that could be anything from a city to a county. And they have several, of course, throughout all over the nation. Every every city incorporated usually has their own building department in county as well. So it's it's the jurisdiction that you're working in as a, in my in my instance, it would be the building department in that jurisdiction.
Okay. How much experience do you have in performing plan reviews?
Oh, probably twenty-four years.